Good evening. This is the virtual board of select meeting for Monday, July 6th. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich MA.us. If you was to speak on a particular agenda item, please indicate so in your email. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Scott. We opened the Harwich Board Selectment Meeting for July 6, 2020 at 5:45 and then went into open session. We discussed two items, or, and then from open session went into executive session, which we discussed two items pursuant to MGL 30A. We discussed complaints against a public employee. And then secondly, we just, we discussed strategy session for contract negotiations of non-union personnel, namely the finance director, fire chief, elect, I guess designated fire chief, if Joe is the proper term, and the police chief. We then, we've now then closed the executive session, returning to open session. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. First on the agenda is our normal weekly briefing. And Joe, I'll turn this to you for COVID-19 and related topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a moment, I'm going to turn it right over to our Public Health Director because as you all may know, today, Monday, July 6th, is the beginning of Phase 3, Step 1 of any number of steps that have gone into effect today. It also is the day that we were able to resume having the general public return to many public buildings. Having said that, today was my day off, so I don't have anything new from today. So I'll turn it over to Megan Eldridge, our Health Director.
Welcome, Megan.
Thanks, Larry. Today, like Joe said, was the beginning of Phase 3, Step 1, and we've been told there will only be two steps. However, they will be longer in duration than Phase 2 were. So we're, we're looking at probably a month per phase at the, at the least. We had a few new cases in Harwich since we spoke last week. We're up at 126 cases in Harwich, and the state numbers are looking pretty steady with very low positive numbers every day and even lower fatalities every day. So we're, we're definitely going in the right direction. Both Cape Cod Hospital and Falmouth Hospital both have three COVID-positive cases in each facility right now, and neither of them have any in the ICU. So that's also a really great trend. I did spend a little time in Harwich on the 4th of July, and I am happy to say when I did drive down Route 28 and Main Street in Harwich Port, I saw lots of masks and lots of social distancing. I was on Red River Beach, same thing. People were having a great time, but they were far enough apart and using masks when they needed to. So that was really great to see. Phase 3 gives a little more flexibility with outdoor entertainment venues and indoor entertainment venues, as well as movie theaters and some retail stores have some more flexibility with dressing rooms. And one thing that's a pretty big change is the, the gathering sizes. So we've gone from a minimum of 10 in an indoor area to a maximum of 25 in an indoor area. So that's a, that's a big jump. So we'll be able to allow for more, more gatherings of 25 or less inside, and the outdoor gatherings increased to 100. So an outdoor space, an event like a wedding or a private party could, at, at a venue like a resort or something like that, could have 100 guests outside as long as they were able to social distance. There are some restrictions with live performances. No singing indoors at this point, or brass or wind instruments are allowed on indoor areas. But if they are outside, you're able to have singing and wind and brass instruments as long as the front row or the closest person sitting to them is at least 25 feet away, and the performers have to be 10 feet away from each other in those cases. A lot of other things were open as well. Fitness centers and gyms, personal training, that sort of thing are able to go back into the gyms with 40% capacity or eight people per thousand square feet, again with maximums of 25 inside. And there's a lot more restrictions as well with cordoning off equipment, every other piece of equipment and still needing to wear masks. But if you don't wear a mask, you have to be 14 feet away from each other. So there's still, there's all sorts of rules that have come out in the last couple of days, and I'm still trying to digest them. Everyone is welcome to go to masks.gov/reopening, and there's a list of sector-specific standards. And it lists everything from car washes to outdoor recreation and boating and restaurants have new guidance and everything. So I'm trying to keep up with it, but it is, like I said, it changes all the time. So I'm still trying to catch up with that. That's COVID. Today, we did open our town hall as well as a few other buildings. A little, a little crazy. We were supposed to volunteer first thing in the morning to help kind of direct people, but unfortunately, we were, we're left without a volunteer today for, I'm not sure what reason, but we, we managed and we're able to get appointments over to where they need to be. And hopefully, the public will start making appointments and visiting those departments that they want to see. They think it's, it's better than it was a week ago when you couldn't come in at all.
Megan, specifically the status of the golf course? What they can, can't do?
They, the changes for Phase 3 for golf, they're allowed to have the rakes at the sand pits, and they're allowed to have ball washers, but they are required to disinfect those on a regular, frequent basis. So I would say at least daily for those. We had a question from Roman and Sean about not being able to do that because they don't have the staff right now in order to clean those. So we, we have to have a conversation about either adding staff or keeping those amenities closed. You're able to have, I believe you're able to have a caddy now. So a little bit more freedom going, going back to regular things with golf, but they, they still have social distancing, masks required, that sort of thing.
Megan, the second question I have is, in reopening Town Hall, would it be worthwhile to put, highlight that on a, on a webpage and instructions on how to do that?
I believe it is. The guidance document is on the front page of our website, and that guidance document says Town Hall is open by appointment only. Is there something else you were looking for?
I saw that, I maybe didn't say it enough. Is, is there, is, maybe it could be highlighted more was my point. But I'll look at it.
Okay, well, we can, we can talk to Jamie and Caleb about that and figuring out the best way to let people know that they have to make an appointment to go into Town Hall.
And, you know, who to call or what the number is and just to make that more visible. But I would ask around first to be sure that I'm, could be that I'm the only one, it may be very apparent to everyone, so I wouldn't jump on it until you have some, you know, some facts.
Okay. And we do have a sign posted at all three entrances, and someone did post all the phone numbers there too. So if you come to Town Hall and you don't have an appointment, if there's a volunteer there, they are handing out a piece of paper that has all of the departments and phone numbers on them. But when there's not a volunteer there, the door should have, and it does now have all of the phone numbers listed.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Comments, questions for Megan? As usual, keep busy, I guess. Not hard, is it?
Thank you, Megan.
Not hard.
Thank you.
Moving next then to, Scott, I'll take a break. Next on your agenda is public comments. Is, is there anyone who wishes to have a public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the next one is the
I'm sorry.
Business community.
I turned my page over.
Our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director available.
Good evening, everyone. As Megan said, it was quite a busy weekend throughout Harwich, which is a great thing to see. From a business standpoint, we had all of our shops and restaurants quite busy, the municipal lot down here turned over, I can't even count how many times. So it was wonderful to see, but again, we want to make sure that everyone is practicing the social distancing and the wearing of masks, which, as Megan pointed out, majority of people are. And certainly, businesses are informing people as they come in to please make sure that they are wearing them. So just want to make sure that everyone's safe and responsible. But it was wonderful to see. Summer definitely started this weekend in, throughout all of Harwich. I did regular drives throughout the seven villages, and it was wonderful to see. Many stores had lines outside waiting to go in. Restaurants are still doing the outside, the inside, all following the guidelines as well as continuing the curbside and takeout. Traffic was extremely heavy, and at times it felt like we were on the Indian River down here. So I did reach out to Deputy Chief Considine, and we have the little speed limit electronic signs down here. So thank you to the Harwich Police for that. Those are placed by Tanyan and Three Monkeys because there were a lot of people down here for sure. Phones are busy down here at the visitor center, all kinds of questions, continuing to hand out all the bags since we can't have anyone from the public inside here. So that's continuing along with the summer visitor beach stickers, the trend is for Massachusetts mainly. They're purchasing full season. They may be taking a break, not here one week, but they are buying the full season. So that is good to see. Again, I had mentioned last week, the business levels are picking up and still businesses are looking for help since they, unfortunately, were not able to have our visa workers. So again, we have many of those job postings on the Chamber website under job postings. I know 400 East, the Commodore Inn, Dunkin' Donuts, as well as George's Pizza. And then this Friday from 1 to 6, the Waquasit is having a job fair on-the-spot offerings. Many of those positions have sign-on bonuses. So for many, if you're looking, high school kids, college students, great place to work, Harwich is only, and the Cape's only, five-star resort. So please take a look at those. I think that is all I had, but summer's here for sure.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions, comments for Cindy? I see none. Thanks again, Cindy.
Absolutely.
Next on your agenda is public comments and announcements. Scott, is there anyone who wishes to take advantage of this agenda item?
No, sir. No, no emails at this, at this point, but I could take a moment just to remind anybody viewing that if you do wish to speak on any of the agenda items tonight, you have to send an email to comment@town.harwich MA.us, and I'll be monitoring that throughout the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Scott. If they do so, we'll make room for them to join us. Next is new business and staffing levels in administration departments. Joe, you used to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And really, this was just to put out there on the record, if you will. So last week, the board allowed me to sign the agreement with Mr. Lawton, which will allow him to continue in a very limited capacity as the interim Assistant Town Administrator, closing out projects, meaning he will not be in person during the summer. He's closing out mostly procurements and one or two personnel items that would have fell to him as acting Assistant Administrator. So that means we're, we're really going to have the bulk of the summer without the second part of procurement, if you will. I, I really don't know what the solution is, but I just wanted to, to make the board aware of it. And difficult timing because we are heading into what is hopefully going to be our spring annual town meeting in September. So that, again, I want to put it out there, but just seek some direction from the board or just an understanding that, you know, we're going to sort of retreat for, if you will, for a little bit because of staffing levels.
Comments on that? I guess we are where we are. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just to let the board know what's going on. Bob and I have been speaking because my role is the Housing Trust Chair. The staffing that we get is under a contract and not expired on June 30th, so we're going to be doing monthly procurements. But Charlene had developed a contract that she submitted back to Bob for review. We had one change, and he's got it, but it's going to wind up going out, and it's going to be awarded by the trust, not by Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Other comments? We'll, we'll just have to keep that in mind, Joe, see what we can, any help we can pull in. Moving on to old business?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, first, you can see a very general topic there, update on fiscal year 2021 outlook ahead of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting on Monday, September 28th. And the first part of this is just for me putting out there that I think we need to retrain our brains that even though we're in the summertime, we're going to be progressing towards our annual town meeting as we get through the, the 112th budget process. And, Mr. Chairman, as you and I spoke, it was also an opportunity for you to speak to the board about potential subcommittee to, to work towards that effort of annual town meeting.
Let me speak to that, and then we'll ask Carol to come in on what, what Joe was talking about. I, and Dana DeCops is on the, I see his pretty face there now. He's on the, has joined us. What I'd like to do is to appoint a, a subcommittee of, of two selectmen and meet with the FinCom, Working Committee, to, to help us structure the, and provide input into the financial budget decisions going forward. We have, this has almost become a standing item, but I think it's a good time for us to work together with FinCom, with Carol, and with Joe on discussions of what our options are going forward on the budget, what the issues are. The revenue seems to change almost daily as we see businesses pick up. And from the selectmen, I'd like to appoint Steve and Don as our two members on that committee. And, oh, Dana, you've talked about adding three so that we're both below our quarms, and this can be a working ad hoc committee that obviously would dissolve when we, in the next several months, hopefully. Dana?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, we'll be talking about it Thursday night at our meeting, but I'm looking to have John and Angelo, John only because he has to learn more about it, and Angelo because he's been there for a while, and myself as the three members from our committee. And it's basically just to help steer the policy questions that you folks have to come to and answer so that then the Finance Committee would be able to go to work on its job for town meeting. As you said, we have 84 days and we're at town meeting, which in a normal cycle, the town administrator presents the budget in January, and we're done in May, which is four months. We've got less than three months right now, and there are some warrant questions, there are some taxation questions, there are just policy questions that the Finance Committee has that can't go any further until they're answered by you folks. And this is certainly a year where we want to show up at town meeting with some sort of unified approach to dealing with this unique situation. That's what I see coming out of this subcommittee.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, we spend a lot of time reviewing the budgets, and we spend time, I know Carol spends a lot of time presenting this, but the intent on this subcommittee is to have a, a working group to bring back to us as a full board and what some, hopefully what our options are and some detailed background of that, to ease our discussions and make our, our policy direction more fruitful. So that's where we are, and I'm hoping if there's not comment, I'd ask this committee to get started because we have, we're asking them to do a lot of work in a short time. Is there any comment? Question?
To ask Dana a question, I mean, are the, do you already have existing questions from the Finance Committee that you need a response from the Select Board at this point, or they still need to be developed and thought through more?
We've got the major ones sort of developed. Basically, if you're on board with having a subcommittee, I was going to get those to you two gentlemen tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, as soon as we can get the questions before the whole Select Board, the faster, as you were pointing out, the, you know, the schedule is so tight, the faster we can kind of address those issues. So, but no, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you, Dave. If, we'll move ahead then, and thank you, Dana. Carol, do you want to give us a brief update of where you think we are as, as of July 6th and maybe changing tomorrow?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I've been working on your draft, a very early draft, the budget for FY21, and I based it on what was presented to you in March, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and then made some changes from there. I took the liberty of, of making some assumptions that certainly you'll have up for discussion as, as you continue this process. We have updated revenue to reflect the positive trends that we've seen thus far in the fiscal year. Your golf revenue came in very strong. Your disposal revenue came in strong as well. Real estate and personal property taxes are, are at the levels, payment levels as they have been in prior years. Where we fell a little short thus far in FY20 was motor vehicle excise tax, investment revenue, and then, of course, rooms and meals taxes. But for the most part, your department, your departmental revenue came right on target. We're still processing the final receipts for FY20. As soon as we have those processed, we'll be able to give you a final picture of where we are. But I don't think that, as far as, in my professional opinion, I don't think that your revenue stream is going to be as, you're going to see as shortfalls as we first discussed way back, I don't know, April perhaps. I think there is a much more positive trend. I've reached out to both regional school districts, and they both responded with budget cuts as well. And I think that that'll assist when you deliberate over your budgets. So I, I did send out this afternoon a draft for discussion purposes of summary budgets for you, just to see, just for you to be able to see perhaps where you may be in a starting point, or perhaps where you may want to change some assumptions that I've made.
Is anyone here to comment on that? Because we've, yeah, I think in April, we were talking as much as a $4 million deficit in, in revenue, and it's going to be less than that, is what you're saying. We don't know what the number is exactly, but it's more positive than the initial thought.
So just for your, for clarification purposes, right now, I have local receipts that are, we're looking at a reduction of about 15% in local receipts, which is less significant, I think, than, much less significant than what was previously estimated. And we don't know the future right now. We don't know if there'll be another surge, but this is based on the trends, the positive trends that we've seen in the months of May and June. And so I've based my, my estimations off of those, those trends, those positive trends. I did not make any reductions from what was proposed to the board for departmental budgets. The only reductions that I made were to Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, where I received their final number today. We're waiting for the draft assessment for Montemoy, which should be in shortly, shortly, I mean, this week. They did make a reduction of $475,000 in their total budget. So a portion of that is going, a large portion of that will come to Harwich. And then in addition to that, I made the assumption that based on where you are financially, you may not want to fund your OPEB in, in FY21. And that funding was proposed at $150,000 for the year. So those are the overall, or kind of a really broad overview of what I've presented or what I sent to you this afternoon. We can certainly have more discussions, and I'm sure we will, have more discussions moving forward as you continue to review these budgets and make important decisions about what is going to be brought to town meeting in the fall.
Thank you, Carol. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my mind, it's, this is not just addressed to Carol, but the, part of the endeavor here has got to be that this, this workforce, task force is going to bring back to the respective boards what they're going on, but there's interrelated parts that we haven't talked about. The budget that gets presented to us normally is through the town administrator. The town administrator's got to be part of this as, as line management for the actual programs.
He is part of it.
Yeah, well, I, I want to make sure that he doesn't find out about that when it comes to a meeting here, that there should be discussion in between, like with this task force.
No, I think.
But there's policy implications. I'm not sure how I feel about spending out some of the things that we've got left over, may not be left over next year. That's the whole point of meeting. So, and then we have a discussion here about what it is, you know, we see the town looking like based on the revenue projections and based on where we think we need to save money and where it is we are comfortable with cutting. But I don't want anybody walking away from this discussion thinking that we've got a bundle of cash that we found in the bottom drawer somewhere that we're going to be using to spend on next year because nobody can predict what next year's revenue stream is going to be, honestly.
Steve, do you have a point?
No, no, I'm good. I, I still want to take a little more time to review Carol's. We just got it late this afternoon, so, but I appreciate the, the work, Carol. Thank you.
Michael? Ed?
No.
Don, to your point, I've talked to both Carol and Joe, and they're part of this discussion. Any of the policy decisions will come back to the full board. This is getting the information and trying to lay out where we go with some of these numbers, because I think if we're doing our job, we'll, we'll look at a couple scenarios, you know, worst case, even case in some options we may have available to us in terms of OPEB, reserve funds, these types of options, you know, from revenue side, where will we go?
I was just addressing the evolving, more rosy picture from like six or seven weeks ago, and really, that's going to rely on what it is we want to do as a board and what services we think are absolutely essential and what other things we can look at to save money at.
Guess we have to hope that the businesses continue as they are, and we don't have another surge or anything crazy going on. Thank you, Carol. There's no more discussion. We'll, we'll move on. Joey, you want to move to the next?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you'll see in the agenda that the next, next topic is hiring freeze impact on vacant positions, and I've listed them alphabetically by department, but really, the key point of the discussion tonight is relative to item number two, council and aging, to the social services coordinated position. All of the positions and departments you see there represent departments where the department you see there represent departments where the department heads have indicated to me that they feel that there is a, a need to get moving on filling these positions. Obviously, we can't do that in a vacuum based on the discussion we just had and will have going forward. But at this point, I think, you know, the Board is aware of the, the items that you have there. You can see my memo with the resulting, with the attached potential salaries to give the Board a sense of what we're talking about for money to be expended. But really, for large departments, Chairman, it's a chance for you to hear from our community, excuse me, our Council on Aging Director relative to social services, and then if there's any other discussion, items such as Health Department and Police, Fire and others.
Okay. I take it, Joe, our, next on our list should be Emily, speaking to her need. Emily, can you-
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Thank you for having me before you tonight, for hearing the impact on the hiring freeze on the social services coordinator position and hopefully considering an exemption to the freeze. I know I gave you kind of extensive written documentation in your packet. I can certainly highlight some of the key features from it, or if you wanted to jump into any questions that you had, I can go either way, whichever is better for the Board.
I guess, you've laid it out in great detail, Emily, and I appreciate that. I guess my, my single question is, there's no doubt that all these services are needed. My question would be, is there any of that that can be handled in another manner than hiring someone through contract services or counters, you know, county services or, that would get us to the same endpoint?
My thoughts on that unfortunately are no. The nature of aging services is that they tend to be piecemeal and disparate and require someone who's very knowledgeable about all the different pieces and knows how to pull them together, who is familiar with the agencies and the providers. So, we do, you know, we as a council on aging have a scope of services. We provide nutrition support, limited transportation, health, wellness, socialization, those kinds of activities and services. And then, there are other services provided through the community such as in-home care, caregiving support, greater level of legal healthcare, financial support. And it's really a matter of tying all those pieces together. And that's really what the social services coordinator does, is they're familiar with the, the players and the agencies and the providers. They meet with the seniors who are in need of those services, kind of assess the need, and then either fill them through the Council on Aging or by connecting them to the appropriate agencies. So, there's no one else that really does that assessing and triaging and connecting the same way that a social services coordinator would. I'm not familiar with anything regionally on the county level that would supplement or supplant that role, unfortunately. We have, I know you've heard updates about the academic public health volunteer corps program, and there was some talk about how that could meet the role of a social services coordinator. They are supporting us in really wonderful ways. They're making wellness calls to seniors who have opted into the program, but they don't provide that same level of professional clinical support and connection to local resources. And I don't see any other way to meet that need, unfortunately.
Thank you. Other questions for Emily? What's the, your others of the Board? We, we want to move, we have this position? Michael?
I certainly think so. You know, I'm just going to take the time to point this out. I don't, I'm still a little confused as to why this has taken so long. So, Larry, I know I've expressed my frustration to you, and I appreciate the Town Administrator's comments in the bottom paragraph of his, his memo, that he's spoken to Megan Eldridge and he fully agrees that it's a critical component of our emergency response. I think if we all remember, I brought this up as a Board topic, I think, months ago, related to COVID-19 and related to people in other towns dying in their homes. And I just, I'm, I'm pretty upset that it's taken us this long to get here. And we talk about communication. We talk about the five of us communicating and, and doing it. And I feel like I brought this forward to the Board. I asked some questions. I never got my answers. Larry, I followed up with you. I didn't get my answers. And then, last week, we read a memo from the Health Director that the Council on Aging Director wasn't included in. So, this is the piece of the communication that I would like to see repaired. And these are, this is the information that I would like the Board to start getting so that we can make decisions and not call, deem something months ago not as important as it was and now deem it this important. So, I would ask that the Board, that we come up with a way to at least follow up on things and make sure that we're getting the information and that we are communicating. So, I would move that we fill this position as, as soon as possible.
I take your initial point, but we also have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Don?
And I might point out that that would be precisely the mechanism we should use, make a motion, we vote for it on behalf, but it's not just a question of a, a sense that it's important. So, shame on us too. If we, we didn't take the position that it was exempt and we did take a, a vote to create a hiring freeze.
Joel, does that give you, well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joel, does that give you the information, Emily, to proceed?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
We'll begin immediately.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ed?
Just, I guess, a comment, but, you know, if we bring something up at a meeting and question why we're not moving ahead on it, we can't really, until it comes, it's brought back to us, make a motion in a second to move ahead on it. We need a response to the question that's raised during discussion.
Yeah.
And if, and if no response is ever made and we don't see it back on the agenda, it's hard to make that motion in a section, you know, I guess.
Well, I think Michael makes a point. It's an area we need to improve on. Any other comments on it? Joel, what about the other positions you have here? Are those more for information at, at this moment?
I do know we have, let me see, we have the Deputy Police Chief, the Health Director and the Deputy Fire Chief on the line that could speak to their positions. I can tell you that I had a conversation with our Building Commissioner. He has two positions that are open, Executive Assistant, as well as the Inspector position that was vacant right before the budget process and the, and the pandemic. I, I've asked department heads to reach out to me. This list that you see here represents those that have responded since the Board confirmed the hiring freeze. I believe that was three weeks ago. So, the only one that I would point out is I believe we, there is a contractual obligation for the dispatcher position at some point. I know that the Deputy Police Chief can speak better than I to this, however, when the Chief spoke with Dispatch, they were agreeable to the manner in which they're filling it presently, which is overtime, which is actually a cheaper way to go, if you will. However, now that we've entered into a new fiscal year, their contract agreement between the town and that collective bargaining association says that there shall be five dispatchers, and we're presently not at that level. Other than that, I'm sure every department head can make a case for why they need these positions. You saw the additional email, excuse me, the additional memorandum in there from our Health Director, where we have now a, a new vacancy in the Health Inspector, part-time, and she's arguing, and I don't disagree necessarily, with trying to make that a full-time position. So, there's any number of positions here as well as others that I have learned from yet. I also want to note that the numbers that I provided in the spreadsheet are straight-up salary numbers. It does not take into consideration the full fringe benefit and total cost of compensation.
So, we can multiply these times 1.5, basically, to get to a real number. How do we, what's the limitations we have on the, on funding these positions?
Well, these are all positions, with the exception of the, of full-time Health Inspector, these are all positions that I understand are still in the proposed budget for fiscal year 21. To be quite honest and blunt about it, my only concern about any of these positions was recognizing the dire financial situation that we started out in, recognizing that in any of these collective bargaining agreement positions, last in is first out. And so, we could be doing searches for people that we hire and then depending upon how the budget goes in September, may not like be able to hang on to them. So, in that case, I wanted to tread lightly. But again, there's a need. There's, there's a program need for all of these.
So, all these open positions are built into the budget as it now stands?
Correct.
The one position that is open right now that's not here is DPWs. That, was that, not that in the budget or that was something that?
It was an oversight by me and it was not bumped back up. So, I'm sure there's a few others that I've missed in the short term.
Ed?
Joe, you mentioned a, a full-time Health Inspector?
Well, I think in your packet, there's a memo from Megan. So, the position that I have in my memo, there's a vacancy in the Health Inspector, and Megan has articulated a case to see if we would expand it to a full-time inspector.
Okay, because on the, the list, you only, it's only-
Correct. Yeah, my list only references how they're currently budgeted and what their commensurate grade and steps are within the CBAs.
I think, in making me speak to this, I think we had a Food Inspector that just resigned.
Just last week.
Maybe, Michael, then we'll get to-
Larry, I would, I would ask that we bring this, the bulk of these back, and I respect that the department heads have joined us. The Health Department being listed as part-time is one thing. There is an extensive memo in here, and I think that that one warrants some conversation. On the rest of these, you know, and if we're, to Don's point, going to go to a motion in a second on everything that we as a Board want from now on, I'm game. But, three months ago or so, I asked for a breakdown of what the overtime costs were in Dispatch, and I've asked it a couple times since. The Chief was on back when this topic came up originally, and he said that he didn't need a dispatcher at this point, that he could backfill with overtime. So, I'd like to see what the overtime cost was, and, and we just used the word, less expensive. It's not my understanding that it's less expensive than hiring a dispatcher at what we have in here for the chart, because if we backfill Dispatch with a patrolman, they get their overtime rate. So, and again, I'm not going to make an educated decision without any information. So, could we get the information on Dispatch? How much overtime has been spent since the dispatcher left in, in a spreadsheet? Could we get from the Fire Department possibly what the overtime costs are related to the, to the missing position, and also look at how many they had out injured last year versus not out injured this year and how they're feeling that shift, and what kind of overtime that we're looking at by not filling that shift? And I would ask for the same for Building Department. We've all talked about reallocating some positions. That's been a conversation because we're not back at full staff yet and because people are doing different duties. So, is it possible to reallocate people into the Building Department? And I know under the last Town Administrator's tenure, he reorganized the upstairs completely as to what it used to be and who did what. So, maybe we could take a look at whether or not that's actually working and if these are extra positions that we need or don't need. But there's no information to make an educated decision. And this originally was going to be a meeting that we were going to come into and talk about the Council on Aging position, and if we could postpone it for a week, we were going to. And it's evolved into all of these topics and all of these open positions, and I'm sure, Larry, you did the agenda, but there's no information.
Right. Well, I, I think if you'll point it out-
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Sure can.
Sure. And I apologize for interrupting. Clearly, I've missed the mark. The Board made it clear that you wanted to have a discussion about the social services coordinator position, and we've done that. There's ample information in the packet. I didn't want the Board to have that discussion absent any other positions, because three weeks ago, when the discussion of a hiring and spending freeze came up, the Board determined that the hiring and spending freezes would continue. However, I was directed to reach out to department heads and seek what other positions the department heads felt were of critical need. The purpose for tonight's discussion was exactly what you've just done, the social services coordinator. But I think I would be similarly questioned on why I didn't provide the information about these other positions. The department heads made me aware of them and making the Board aware of them. I thought it was clear in my, my memo that it was information for the Board. There's no discussion on, there was no intention of a discussion or action by the Board on any of these other positions, other than to make the Board aware of it. We're in the fiscal year 21. These positions are all related to fiscal year 21. And, again, I, I've, I'll put it on me. I've missed the mark. But, when I hear complaints about communication and I try to communicate, now I'm being told that I shouldn't have communicated this. And I'm, it's, it's difficult to try and balance that, Mr. Chairman, to be blunt.
I take your point. I think we're, it was informational and I don't know. We're just asking for additional.
I think someone's taken defense to something I said. What I was asking was the Chairman of the Board, if we could bring this back. And I wasn't blaming Joe for not putting information in. As a matter of fact, I complimented the memo on the two departments that they were in. So, I was asking the Chair if we could bring this back and not discuss it tonight, not accusing the Town Administrator of not providing. So, sorry that you took it that way.
Point taken.
But that was not the intent.
So, my overall point, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, if you look at the, the theme, as I've mentioned before with other agenda, the theme is we're getting into the timeframe where we need to focus on the annual town meeting in September. We're still in a pandemic. We're still being impacted on revenues and anything else. And I'm trying to put information out there for the Board. The Board is, I believe, based on the earlier discussion tonight, agreed to the Subcommittee. I'm trying to put as many action items out there as I can so that everybody's aware of the, of the total picture of what we're trying to deal with. I also want to let the department heads know that I've heard from them and I've brought their concerns through the memo to the Board tonight, and we'll continue this discussion and any other. But, my overall point, and, and it is a frustration of mine, simply because we're still in a pandemic and we're still edging towards an annual town meeting, and I don't think any of us know what it's going to look like when we get there.
Well, where we stand right now is we've approved the Council on Aging help. We'll come back with the other. Joe, I provided information, and we'll come back with additional information on the, as we move forward. The only position that does make me nervous in all this is the Food Inspector, since we just lost recently. So, we've, and I would think that's a critical position, so I would not want to hold off on that too long. So, for my, my priority list, I'd like to come back with that, Joe, as, as quickly as we can. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But, to that point, it'd be real helpful to know in what manner, if we did consider it, we were going to be paying for it. Because I, I said this before, and let me be real specific. I would hate to think that without any kind of real thought about this, we hire people and we start flushing out stabilization fund and other things that aren't, they're there for a rainy day. Now, yeah, it's raining right now in the day we're in, but there's no assurance that if we go forward six months from now, it may not be raining even more for the rainy day. And you, I don't like the idea without us really knowing where we're at and how we'd pay for it, you know, hiring anybody, even if they are an emergency.
Okay, well, I think we, Joel, I think we've, we are where we are. We've, we've approved a Council on Aging aid, help, social services, and I think Michael, Don, and, and I'm sure Eric will add to this, but we, we need to come back and relook it, because this is a lot of money. So, we need to come back and look at where we are. I know, Joe, you've already started looking at some organizational activities that might, and we need to reassess where we are. Take this opportunity.
But Michael's right. I mean, if we're spending, that's part of that discussion. If we're spending more because we're filling in with people on overtime for the dispatcher, that-
We should know that.
That needs to be part of that conversation.
Yep. Okay. Ed?
So, let me be clear, with the, the Health Department, that they're, they're down a, a half a position already and they're-
As of last week.
They lost another one this week.
Okay, so-
Last week.
Given that we need, need to continue doing health inspections because it's an important part of the process of, of keeping our restaurants open. part of the process of keeping our restaurants open, I assume we'll be looking to contract in the meantime with the county to bring in?
Let me pull, Joe, can we pull Megan back into this?
Sure, and once Megan arrives, I know what she said is, we had heard from the county several weeks ago that they were advertising for four or five positions to be shared amongst the towns, and I believe the allocation for us would have ended up being a part-timer from the county on a weekly basis, but I'll let Megan speak to that.
Michael, then Megan.
And just related to that, this is separate from what we voted last week to hire the COVID help.
Correct.
That's a reimbursable item.
Correct, yep.
Megan?
Hi, Larry. Yes, the position you voted for last week is for COVID-related inspections only, not a food inspector. They're not going in to check temperatures and for food safety and for disease, causes of disease. So, this position is now vacant, which is a year-round, part-time position who not only does food inspections, but also does other things like swimming pool inspections, complaint inspections, and reviews Title V inspection reports. So, the position that is, as of Wednesday, vacant, leaves a big hole in the department and our, our ability to respond to not only the routine food inspections, but also any type of complaints that, that we have to respond to. As far as the county goes, they are able to provide a COVID compliance officer, probably not once a week, every week, but at least once a week, every other, every other week, they were able to obtain three COVID compliance staff members for the summer. So, we have not gotten any bites on our ad for that position, so I fear that we won't be filling that, even though that's a reimbursable one. So, we will be able to get some COVID compliance through the county. The county does provide us with one food inspector once a week right now, so, and that's always, every summer. So, that's, that is ongoing, of course, last week was a holiday, so we, we missed out on, on that, since she's here on Fridays, but up until the end of August, we will have a summer sanitarian once a week, and that's a fresh, fresh look at places, not a whole lot of experience, so we, they're there mostly to put eyes on a restaurant and not do really much compliance, but we do have a little bit of help through the county, and they're not able to provide any other days.
This, Ed?
I'm still confused. We, these two positions are two part-time positions?
No, the position right now is a 19-hour-a-week, no-benefit position. That's how it's been for many years, and for many years, it becomes vacant probably every two to three years, because it's very difficult to, to get someone who only wants 19 hours a week with no benefits at this high level of skill and education background. So, what I'm asking for is to go from a .5 full-time equivalent to a 1.0 full-time equivalent. So, instead of having one and a half inspectors, I would have two inspectors.
Okay, so you, you want to take that one to full-time, but your other inspector is also resigned, so that's also vacant now?
No, no.
No, no, just the one.
Okay.
Well, as I said, I would like to make this priority if we get more information, Joe, because, and Megan, because this obviously, if we can't do the Title V inspections, we can't do the food, and all these activities, the septic tanks and so on, we're doing a lot of harm to our local businesses. Mike, well, Steve first, then Michael?
Yeah, I mean, I think at the very least, we need to address the half, the half position. I mean, we now are down a very important position at a critical time during the summer, so we do need to address that, one way or the other. And if we can get, you know, our, if we make a decision to make it a full-time position, that's a different story, but I think we should bring it back as soon as we possibly can, because we, we need to have this position filled.
Michael?
And I think, I think to Stephen's point, and then also to Don's point earlier about hiring and possibly firing, I think tonight we should approve the application process to go out for the part-time person so that we're not down that person. We can change that position anytime we want, but as we get into budgets and as we get into reduced revenue, I think that's a much longer conversation. I would feel comfortable filling the current position, but we'd need a lot more information and a lot more thought budget-wise before we proceed with another full-time position.
I move, we recruit for the part-time position.
Second.
Any other discussion that?
To the point of commitment.
Yeah, that makes me a little nervous based on Megan's comment that she's been unable to keep halftime positions in that, in that role. Yes, that was, that was obviously a start of all we consider the full-time positions. Is that your, is that your intent?
Yep.
Because I don't want to ignore Megan's comment that the turnover is large with a halftime. Okay, any other?
If I may, Larry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we fill this, if we advertise and fill this as part-time, and then later on decide it to be full-time, that person who's in the part-time position may not be able to move up to full-time. So, now we have an employee who's potentially six months in, and then we say, okay, yes, we have the money to go full-time. Do we have to let that part-time go, or am I up another full position?
Mr. Chairman?
Joe?
I think the way that we can approach that is based on, if the board votes this, is we advertise for a part-time position, recognizing in the, the notice that it may increase to full-time. So, we put it right there in the notice that we're starting a part-time, but it may increase to full-time based on a vote of the board, town meeting, or any other action. So, there's a way to accomplish it, I think, where we're giving advance notice. What that does to the market response, we don't know yet.
Yeah, Don? But the whole point of the motion, Megan, is to actually get something moving tonight. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here talking about it again next week about what we want to do. If we do to the point of commitment, we're on, we're on a roll and we can decide to pull the trigger on that or not.
Michael?
And don't we ultimately need town meeting vote to put another full-time position on the books?
Correct, yeah.
So, the nearest this is going to happen would be three months from now, and that's assuming that there is no spike and assuming we have a town meeting. So, I would just hate to see Megan handicapped for the next three months and then have it fail at town meeting, because we have no idea what town meeting is going to do at this point.
I think Joe's idea is a good one. It's, you know, we can indicate to the individual that this may become a full-time position, you know, and they'll have that in the back of their mind.
We'll, Megan, we'll go that direction then, if we, I'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Ed?
You know, I had some confusion about how many positions we were discussing, because the, the halftime position came through on the list of things that were previously included in the budget, and then we were all of a sudden talking about somebody else who had just recently, and it became very confusing on?
Yeah, agreed.
Which person we were talking about. And then I guess another issue, this isn't, well, this does have an issue of manpower involved in it, but I think the more critical concern is one of space. Now that we're reopening and there are all sorts of limitations on how big your office needs to be before you can have somebody else in it, our cemetery administrator is now having to conduct lot sales out of the trunk of her car out of the cemeteries, because she has no place to meet with the bereaved families to discuss final arrangements. And I think that we ought to make it somewhat of a priority is locating her a space where she can meet in a somewhat more dignified fashion with people who've lost, just recently lost loved ones, some cases the day before, who are trying to make arrangements rather than literally out of the trunk of her car.
Michael?
Well, as a short fix, it wasn't long ago, the board of selectmen lost their office and got put in the library, and the person holding that space now is only going to do part-time projects, very part-time projects. So, is there a way that Robin could meet in the old selectmen's office, which is basically empty all but one, maybe two days a week?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can try to respond to all of the comments at once. First, to the cemetery director's office, in my personal opinion, that's been a problem for, since before pandemic. Since pandemic, Megan and I did meet with, with Robin, and her office space is inadequate, no matter what's going on in the real world. So, I was aware of it and have been researching and trying to strategize any number of other locations, I've got a few, but to the other point, we were working under the reopening restrictions of 25% capacity. The governor changed that at the last minute to 50% capacity, so one of the offices that we had to move was the town clerk's office. The town clerk is presently in the selectmen's office, library, if you will, and again, Megan can speak to the timeframe on that. But I, I've got one other plan that I wanted to discuss with Robin before I put it out there in the general public, but I think it will accomplish everything the board's looking for. First of all, to give office space that, recognizing the difficult job she has and having those difficult conversations, and so being able to access everything she needs, having some sense of privacy, and also just giving that department head an office that's equal to the responsibility, which hasn't happened. So, I'm hopeful that when I return to work, so to speak, because this is vacation day, that I can pick that up again with Robin, and I think we'll have a very swift and successful conclusion to that.
Correct.
Okay, Ed?
In conversations with, with the cemetery director, what, what she basically needs is really access to files and maps and, as she talks to people, and so to have her just sort of meet people someplace else without having those resources available, you know, and like I said, right now, she, she's been just sort of putting all that stuff in the back of her car, so she'd have it available to meet with people. But it's, it's, you know, it's a time of, time of your life where you need, we need to do a better effort in dealing, in taking care of these folks.
Don? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed's right, except that this would be going on far longer than that. I mean, I went to look at the cemetery plot seven months ago, and it was out of the back of the trunk of her car. So, I think that what Joe's suggesting is a more durable solution, just sit down and talk about what the needs are and fix it, because this goes back to last year.
Yeah, Joe's working on it, I know, so we'll let you have those discussions, Joe, and then come back to us. Ed, go ahead.
And then, because the subject of our item was positions, we still need to, at some point, address some sort of plan to provide some backup for the director, so she's basically not on call while on vacations or, or taking a weekend off.
Joe's shaking his head, we've had that discussion last weekend and tried to?
There's several single department heads that have that, that issue that I think we have an obligation to address, but none more critical than the cemetery director.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Ed?
Yep.
Point's well taken. Enough in that discussion? We'll move next to town administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you should have in your packet two items that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. The first is a memorandum to the chairman of the community preservation committee. I had mentioned several meetings ago that I had been asked for an update. I had worked with staff, and it's been determined for a number of reasons that this was a project that need not go forward. I had mentioned to the board that once I'm made aware of the process, I would inform the chairman to rescind that money. The chairman called me Thursday and said, it's a memo, so that's what you have in your packet there. And then secondly, which is some great news that unfortunately I didn't get into the packet previously, but you can see that the Chase Library in West Harwich is the deserving recipient of the Mass Historic Preservation Grant Program, which is a wonderful accomplishment for anybody, but certainly for that establishment, and I can speak to how difficult it is to acquire those, so that's quite an accomplishment, and wanted to, to recognize that on their behalf and also for the community, it's a feel-good story and we need more of those. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. I'm negligent in not visiting our smaller libraries more than I do. They dearly love visitors, and so I would encourage everyone to stop by. Move to next, before we go to the selectmen's report, Scott, I'll get to you again, see if anyone is interested in joining our discussion?
No, sir, I think we're free and clear of that tonight.
Okay, we'll move then to a selectmen's report, and Steve?
Really nothing, except I was so impressed this weekend, I was in Howardport a number of times on, on Route 28, and every single person I walked by had a mask on, so, you know, congratulations to both, you know, all the folks who own the businesses, but also to all the people who've come to our town. You know, they're really respecting the guidelines, and it's great.
Thank you. Michael?
I have nothing.
Ed?
I'm fine.
Don?
Just to mention that the Clean Waters Rooms Tax Management Board is going to have a Bylaws and Regulations Subcommittee meeting tomorrow. We still have yet to?
Good luck with that.
Bear in mind how it is we're going to disperse those funds.
Okay, and I have nothing, Alex?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, second, all in favor?
Aye.